One minute. Lena. Go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting Thursday, March 7, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. Tonight we have in vocation, Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army. Please stand.
Good evening. I imagine, I've never served on the Assembly, but I imagine it's a lot like standing on shifting sand with all the changes and challenges. So, thank you very much for your service. Join me, please. Gracious Heavenly Father, we give you the praise and glory. We thank you for the privilege that we have to live here on the Kodiak Island. And just now, Father, I seek your blessing upon our mayor, our Assembly members and staff. And Father, I ask for a special blessing upon the men and women who will share their experience and strength and wisdom with them so that we can be a better, stronger community. Father, we just give you the praise and glory. In Jesus' sacred name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiaka Luteq people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Luteq region. We recognize the Luteq culture that enhances and enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Ladue?
Here.
Mr. Sherrett?
Here.
Mr. Smiley?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Whiteside?
Here.
Mayor Art?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Move to excuse Assembly Member Griffin, who is attending the Southwest Alaska Municipal Conference in Anchorage, Alaska.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin? Sorry. Forgot to cross him out. Mr. Ladue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five one.
Next item we have is approval of the agenda and consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the consent agenda consists of the approval of the regular meeting minutes of February 15th and the special meeting minutes of February 29th. Next item we have is citizens' comments. This is agenda items, not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The local phone number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. And please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Seema.
Good evening. I'm Steve McGaruth, the Kodiak Island Borough Assessor. In case you didn't know, notice of values were mailed on February 29th. Assessing staff is available for any discussions on values until March 29th. With the exception of March 25th, which is a borough offices are closed. Or if you didn't receive your notice and you need a copy, please give assessing a call at 907-486-9353. Choose any option to speak with anybody in assessing staff.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take a caller we have right now.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Thank you for calling the Assembly. Please state your name for the record.
Sylvia Tavano.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Borough Assembly Members. I am calling in this evening to address the recent blanket increase on Kodiak residents' property values. As a property and business owner, lifelong Kodiak resident and fishing family, I'm here to ask you all for a mill rate decrease. With the recent inflation of the housing market, the Assessor's Office conveyed to me, when I called them, that they thought it was due time to make this increase to better reflect the property values, as the blanket land increase hadn't been done in many years. We are in a time of economic downturn. We've recently seen the cost of living increase drastically while our yearly income decreases. Our personal household has seen a 25% decrease in our income just this year alone. We have an unstable fishing market. Our export vessel prices are at a 15-year low, and quite frankly, families simply can't afford a 20% increase on our property taxes, especially mine. I'm aware that it may be tempting to get excited about this revenue to help fill deficits in the budget, but I urge you all to tighten the spending, just as my own household has had to do. I ask the Assembly to take great care to consider lowering the mill rate in response to these property value increases. We, me and my husband, wish to raise our children here and make Kodiak our home for many years to come. Please don't tax us out of town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Dan?
Hello, my name is Dan Rohr. Just real quick, I did get a text just a second ago that they're, online they're hearing a lot of squelch, so I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. Wanted to let you know. I wanted to comment in regards to a couple of things, obviously in regards to the notices that we received in the mail. Specifically, one thing that obviously you guys know, but maybe a lot of people listening don't know is, a number of years ago, when I found this out, I was shocked, but that the fact that the State Assessing Department puts a lot of pressure on us as a municipality to value properties at the current market value. I personally am very frustrated with how expensive housing's gotten in town, but it's pretty hard to argue with it when you see three-bedroom houses selling for $400,000, $450,000, as insane as that is. I did want to publicly thank Jim Peterson, who spearheaded the effort to have a maximum allowable tax cap. I think we're all going to really appreciate that this year. As I looked at this paper that I assume the manager put together, right? It's super helpful, but it does bring to light a couple of concerns that I wanted to point out. So, I have three requests. One, the limits only apply to the General Fund, the Education Support Fund, and the Renewal Replacement Fund. I'm specifically concerned about Service District 1. I'm concerned about Fire District 1, and just that as you're looking at those, when they come to you for approval, I'm concerned about the city's mill rate too, but obviously you don't have influence over that. So, as you go to approve those Service District 1s, remember that many, many, many of us are seeing a 20%, 30%, or 40% increase in our property values. Secondly, I would like to ask, I know that the role is not certified yet, but I'm wondering if, in the section where it talks about the limit being the $16 million, if you could have staff, the Financing Department, sooner rather than later convert that into what the new mill rate would be? I realize it would be just an estimate, and I realize you guys approve the mill rate, but the reality is, you'll have a fairly decent idea of, you know, is that going to be 9.5% or is it going to be 10 mills? Or what is that mill rate going to be? I think that'd be very helpful for the public, and I would certainly appreciate it. And then the third thing is, obviously I want to see you lower the mill rate. I appreciate you're lowering it, lowering it half a mill last year. I think that was a good step, but it's obviously time to do it again with many of us seeing that, those large increases. I do have specific concerns about some specific properties, but obviously I'll talk to the Assessing Department directly about that. But I did want to clarify one other thing for the record for people. There's been a lot of information on Facebook about, oh, just the residences or the residential properties are seeing increases, and I'm here to attest to the fact that the commercial properties are seeing it as well. I have one property on Mill Bay that's up, I don't know, 27%, 28%, a couple hundred grand. Another property that's up 60. I've got a guy down the road that I know his is up 200 grand, and that's on a $400,000 building. So, just for the record, I mean, commercial properties are seeing this increase as well. So, anyways, Service Districts, make sure we review those and don't just leave their mill rates. And then if the Finance Department could give us an estimate on the mill rate, that'd be very, very, very helpful. So, again, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wishing to come up, please do.
Good evening. My name is Courtney F. Good to see y'all. I'm speaking in regards to the bed and breakfast, or short-term rental discussion last week. I have heard a certain Borough Assembly member mention that we need to be proactive rather than reactive, and that we could put more on our agenda. A couple of them mentioned maybe putting more on the agenda. And I do believe most of the discussion focused on reactive solutions rather than proactive solutions. I was shocked. I think I looked in the manual that we get with the borough expenditures and how much is spent, where I believe it was in there, the percentage of people that make money from different occupations. And I could be correct if I'm wrong, I'm apologize, but I believe it was pretty close to 80% of our economy was health, care, teachers, education, and government. And so, that is, if that's true, that's a pretty dangerous, pretty unstable situation to be in. So, that being said, I believe a proactive thing would be not to limit any business, including bed and breakfast ability. Also, the housing, so a couple of people mentioned last week, it was a very good suggestion. The proactive thing to be do would be open more land. It would be very quickly built on. So, one person mentioned they thought four or five years it would take to be a difference. No, it would be within one year of land. If we had land available today, there would be people building, there'd be more houses with, I believe personally, there'd be very many houses very quickly. It would make a difference in the market. Also, it is a false assumption that we will be, have a surplus of, or a shortage of rental property. We left within, I believe, at least the last five years, or pretty close to that. We had a surplus of rentals where people were having a hard time renting property because we were in between construction booms. The construction people moved out and opened up a lot of property. But we are in a different situation now, at least according to the rumors. We're anticipating a large increase of influx of Coast Guard property, our Coast Guard personnel, and a lot of people would, are working towards already anticipating that, building rentals on the limited amount of property that we have already. And I'm in construction, so I have some of that inside knowledge. The price for housing is, the affordability, that's kind of a stickler. I don't know if there's a realistic solution to that, because I'm talking to people, if you look at the, if we look at the cost of labor now in our town and materials, people can't build a house for anybody for less than $500,000 anymore. Even a really frugal contractor, if they're going to make any money, it's could be, so there isn't any going back to that. And I don't know who can afford that. So, I believe the proactive thing is support free enterprise and open up some land, and I'll leave it at that, because my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Court. Anyone else wishing, please do.
Good evening, Assembly. My name's Sean Olson, and I just, I don't want to sound like a broken record. I'll follow through with the same thing as your first caller there. That young lady was talking about appealing to lowering the mill rate. You know, I just want to say that my household, her description of what she's dealing with, what I'm dealing with, what our household dealing with, as well as many of the members of my family, this is an extremely difficult time to get hit as significant as our family has on the value of our homes. You know, most of my family is elderly. They really do depend on that $150,000 senior tax break that they get, but at this point, that was all just pretty much wiped out. You know, it's almost non-existent now for some of those family members, and that hits my household too. I take care of a lot of my mother's utilities. I take care of a lot of her living expenses, and this is just a double whammy. For her, for myself, you know, I'm just a hard-working guy. I'm not a business owner. I have nothing to do but to get up, go to work, do my job, pay my bills, and to get penalized, I feel like we're getting penalized for keeping our house clean, for keeping the roof from caving in on itself. If we dress it up, we're taxed. We, I also agree with Court that we need to open up some land. There's a guy here right now. He moved here to take a job on the base. He can't get housing, and he has money for land. He just can't get the land. We need to open up some land. But, you know, he's just a hard-working guy like myself too. And we, I speak for the rest of my family, we just would really like to see a little bit of relief with the mill rate. We're going to do our part. This is just a tough time to get hit like we did. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else? Please come up.
My name is Robert Higgs. I basically reiterate what's already been said, is we're definitely need some relief on the mill rate. Seems like Kodiak's already pretty, pretty highly taxed. We have very high registration fees on our vehicles. I just paid 300 and some dollars to register my four-wheeler. Between that, between the property taxes going up, or the assessment going up as much as it's gone up, it's hits that a lot of us just can't afford to take. The economy, as been said already, the economy's not doing that well in Kodiak especially, and we just really need some relief on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller on the phone? We'll take caller next. If somebody else wants to come up to the podium and sign in, please do. Go ahead.
We're now answering a call from the queue.
Thank you for calling the Assembly. Please state your name for the record.
Steven Foss.
Would you turn your radio off, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
State your name again, please.
My name is Steven Foss.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm along with everybody else here as far as this thing on our taxes and our assessment. I know in other places in the country that they have a limit as to how much they can go from one year to the next, as far as their taxes, regardless of what their assessment is. But I have one piece of property that went up 53.8, almost 54%, in its assessment value, and then I have another property who's up 12% in its assessment value, and I have another piece of property that it didn't go up at all. So, I'm just kind of wondering how this assessment is dealt with, and, anyway, you need to do, figure something else so that a person's taxes don't go up 53% from one year to the next because of an increase in the assessment. You there?
Yeah, we're listening. Are you done?
So, that's about it, right there.
Okay. Well, thank you for calling in. Next, please.
Borough Mayor and Assembly Members, my name's David Hilty, and I'm also speaking to the issues of the tax assessments. I'd like to say that when I get my stack of assessments in the mail, I let them sit in a stack for a few days, because I know that when I open them, I'm going to be really cranky and really sad. So, kind of pick a special day late in the evening so I can just go to bed. Overall, I own, I own some residential and commercial properties, my wife and I, and overall, when we did the calculations, throughout all of them, we're up 34%. We tried to do some, you know, quick education to the issues. Earlier today, we came in and saw Seema and Cody. They were very professional. We went through every one of them, and anything that I had issues with, she was able to either enlighten me. Some of them, I was able to enlighten her, and we found some issues that we were able to get some minor reductions. So, I suggest for anyone who has discrepancies, true discrepancies or questions, to go in and see them. It was, it was very good. But I would say that in my adult lifetime, this is the first time that I've thought about leaving Kodiak, just because of the increased expenses of things like this. I don't think that I'm going to do that, but the thought crossed my mind, and our waterfront is reeling with pain. All the support industries for our waterfront are doing the same. So, we just really need to take that into account. One thing that Seema explained to me, the best of my knowledge, was the state is mandating that we get these things, you know, over a three-year period, we get assessments up to par value. I read the article in the newspaper tonight that said that our borough usually gets $16 million in assessments. If we were to, as the state says, increase assessments by 20% overall, that's another $3.2 million that's coming into the coffer. I don't want to see that as just money that, we have extra money, so we're going to spend on certain things. I would like to see a reduction in the mill rate that equals or goes beyond that $3.2 million, just so that we keep things on an equal level playing field. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do it this time.
Mr. Mayor, Member of Assembly, my name's Alexis Squatchka. I don't have anything additive to say. I just think that it's informative that you got people coming in here. A little, little, a few people equal a lot. You know, I can tell you that my piece of dirt that has nothing on it's gone up 30% in the last two years, and I guess that's because stuff's sold around it. My house has gone up 20% this year. I didn't figure it out last year. No houses have sold around me. And, but, that's not true. One did, and it sold to the hotel, which is now just an add-on to the hotel. And I think that it is valuable to take a look at what's going on with VBRO, or whatever you want to call it, for vacation rentals, because the reality is, you're going to tax people that have lived in this community for a long time out of this community. And as Dave said, I'm one of those people that, for the first time, you know, every time I go to the DMV, I get viscerally pissed off. You know, $300 to register my car, that I then have to pay Nick to crush up, when the whole idea with that was to use that money to not have to pay when I got to the life of my car. And accumulatively, all those things add up. I'm one of these lucky guys that gets to live in the city and be a borough member. And so, I just think that, you know, this should be a wake-up call, whether it's a mill rate reduction or whatever it is. You guys need to wake up that, and look at what this community is going to look like in 10 years, you know? I think it's time to talk about putting Peterson Elementary on the chopping block. I don't know if we're going to spend $3 million on, on that roof or what we're going to do. I think that there's a lot of things that you need to think about, what the trade-offs are, and what the return is for the impact that the Coast Guard's going to have on this community. If we're going to bring 1,500 more people in here, you know, that's how you get to $400,000 for a Lucian home or $350,000 for a Lucian home. That's not real, you know? And if we capture that in this day and age right now, what's it look like when you run all these people that have been here forever out of this community? You need to stop, slow down, take a look at what you're doing. You know, a 30% increase on a piece of dirt in two years, that's unrealistic. And so, just be careful. You've kicked the nest. Now, let's figure out a good way to do it that's out of it. Schools are on the decline of the people that are coming in? Let's talk about that. I didn't vote for an $80 million high school. I didn't vote for an $18 million swimming pool. I voted for a $6 million swimming pool. It somehow turned into an $18 million swimming pool, which we didn't have a heater big enough to put in. I think you just need to deal with this stuff openly and straightforwardly, and talk to the community about it, and figure out the best way to move forward. Do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Alexis. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do.
Good evening. My name is Misty Lee. Again, I am here to reiterate some of the things that have already been addressed. I would urge the Assembly to contemplate a decrease in the mill rate to align with the shift in revenue. The aim to be, to alleviate the taxpayers' burden. Personally, the current assessments are affecting my family's decision to maintain our home in Kodiak. We have been homeowners here for over two decades. Over the past two years, our property's assessed value has surged by $111,000. This increase basically wiped out my husband's VA disability percentage write-off, and it threatens to our ability to uphold the quality of life we've cherished in this community.
Thank you for coming forward.
The shark guy. Good evening, Mayor and Assembly. I'm here to basically say everything else.
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, Randy Enson.
Thank you, Randy.
When I got my assessment this time, I about fell over. I just recently retired. My wife is retired. We're on a fixed income. And my house went up $90,000. That eliminates my taxes. That eliminates my taxes up basically one fifty for keeping on payments. So, and not only that is, one thing people don't realize, I don't know if you think it this way, is once the price goes up for your house, now you got to go to the insurance company and increase what you're paying the insurance company to cover it. And it just keeps snowballing from there. So, yeah, it'd be nice to see if we could work something out and be a little more kind to people. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Hoffman. I'm a local fisherman here. A little bit of a funny story. I wasn't, I knew this meeting was happening, but I wasn't planning on coming because I hadn't gotten that horrible letter in the mail with my tax assessment, but opened my mail this evening and there it was. And, yeah, sure enough, about seventy, eighty thousand dollars more. I didn't have much time to look at it because I looked at my phone and it was about time to come to this meeting, so here I am. I'm a local fisherman here, salmon fisherman, so fisheries are down. I'm looking at at least fifty percent less price than I was going to get last year. The fish prices are half. And then beyond that, the forecast for fish is down. I don't, I don't know. I, I, I do love living in Kodiak, but I keep talking to friends who have moved away, and I, so many of my friends have moved away. I, I really don't want to leave this place, but if at a certain point I can't make money fishing, and every, every year, I mean, property taxes go up, every tax I have go up, landing taxes, everything's going up, and I just make less and less money fishing. I mean, we'll have a good year, and then we'll have two or three bad years, and we'll have another good year, and I don't know. I just, I think there's some, there's some bad times coming. We got bad fish prices. I don't know. I, now my tax, my taxes on my house are going up quite a bit. I don't know. I really don't want to leave here, but everywhere else I looked, I think one time I looked at Homer moving over there, because I know of a lot of friends in Homer that fish in Kodiak, and, man, the Homer, the last I looked at it was quite a few years ago, but the, the property taxes in Homer were less than we pay for just the bond repayment for the high school here, and it, that kind of shocked me, just the mill rate over there was so different. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't want to leave this island, but I don't, I don't know what to do. I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a lot less money fishing because I'm a salmon fisherman and I, I don't have a land job, and I'm just going to get paid less for my fish, and all my taxes are going up. So I just wanted to come down here and say that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Caller, we'll take caller next if somebody else in the audience is interested in coming up. Please come up and sign up.
You are now answering a call from the queue. Thank you for calling the Assembly. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name's Yvonne Shields Chaco.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm also just wanted to make just a quick comment about the tax assessments, and, you know, we've, we've all heard it a lot tonight, so I don't want to get into that. I feel very much the same way, but one thing that I wanted to bring up that I haven't really heard yet, and I hope that you all can take into consideration, is these costs increased and the effect that it has just on our Kodiak workforce. And we all know how strapped we are. Everyone's hiring. We can't fill positions. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that it's not an appealing place to move to. When you look at the cost of living, you know, people are going to choose somewhere, and I think that's something that we kind of want to consider and think about when it comes to setting our mill rate. You know, we, we didn't have a veterinarian for a while. You know, we don't have one now. We're hope, it's just things like that. It affects medical, it affects people personally, households, your pets. It, it affects everything, and I just wanted to bring that up as well. It, it's another facet to the problem of increased costs, and I was just hoping that it would be something that would be considered as well within the discussions.
Thank you for calling, Yvonne.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
I think this is on, okay. My name's Heather Johnson, and thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to say again, like everybody else here, please lower the mill rate. What I'm worried about is we're not going to have young people that can live here. In two thousand, I was a single mom of two with student debt. I worked at a coffee shop, and I was able to buy a house. My kids are not going to be able to do that. It's, it's too expensive here. I don't know the answer. I don't know why houses are so crazy, but I worry about young people not being able to afford to live here. Our school population is going down. Well, that's because young people with families can't live here. We get funding from those, those kids, but those kids are going to be gone. We have a working town. We need young families, but we need to make it so they can stay here. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, Members of Assembly. My name's Peter Thompson, and I'd just like to reinforce pretty much what Heather just said and what everybody else, I'll save you some time. But, you know, I, I showed up here forty-five years ago with a backpack and some sheet plastic, and this place has been really, really incredible to, to myself and my family. Raised a family here. It's always been expensive, but it just seems now it's like this whole new dimension of, you know, harbor fees are going up, KEA's going up, this new assessment. I'll save you a whole pile of time. I'm, I'm in complete support of what you've been hearing. I will just say at the end of this, it would really be nice to see the mill rate adjusted to some reasonable level. And then now that I'm a senior citizen after paying taxes for forty-five years, and that hundred and fifty thousand dollar on my home, it's just completely vaporized with, with this new last few years. So I think that should take some serious consideration on adjusting that to effective for, for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Hello, my name is Danny McKinney. I'm coming to you today not knowing whether the assessor's estimation on my home is reasonable or not, because I'm not selling my home, and I don't quite frankly have time to go out and look at what's sold in my area to see what other values are like or not. But I do know that when I got the bill, the assessor's bill in the mail, it about knocked me over because it's a lot, and my house is just your basic little box. I mean, there's nothing special about it. I don't know what the answer is. I know that the population here is going down and that businesses are decreasing, and there's less people at the school, and, and people are going to lose their jobs because the budget at the school is bad and the processors are closing. So many things are taking away from income in our community, and I know that you guys still have expenses for the district or for the borough that have to be paid, but it can't all be shouldered by people who own homes. And, and when I look at the people that are here, we're not a bunch of crackpots or people trying to get a freebie. If you're hearing from this many people in an evening who are reasonable, working people that have taken their time this, tonight to come talk to you and probably would be willing to do a lot more than that, I hope that you'll take it into consideration seriously that we can't shoulder this burden much more. So people like me, I, I'd like to retire, but how can I afford to retire here? I won't be able to pay the property taxes. I mean, just the grocery, groceries alone have gone up at least a third, if not a half, from what they were before, and gas prices don't come down, and KEA's going up, and I think we're all feeling very burdened right now. So I'm, I don't know if bringing down the mill rates the answer or some other kind of creative funding or cutting some of the services. I don't know what you're going to do, but I think you're going to break the back of Kodiak if you can't get this under control, because people are going to have to start moving. So thank you for your time, and I do appreciate all that you do. I know that you're all residents here for a long time yourself, and probably are feeling this burden yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Caller? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak tonight, please come up and sign in while we-
We're now answering a call from the queue.
Anyone wishing to-
Thank you for calling the Assembly. For the record.
Excuse me?
You're on the air.
Hey, this is Young Kylie. Wanted to talk about pretty much the same thing everybody else has. My, my property assessment was increased by just under forty percent, two hundred and forty-five thousand. I started the appeal process, I believe it was lower by about twenty thousand, but it's still substantially higher than what I purchased the place for two years ago. After talking to the assessor, I mean, it definitely sounds like I need to get an appraiser out here to give me a more realistic value of my property, but with the deadlines that they have set, the chances of me getting an appraiser to fly to Kodiak, get the appraisal done before that deadline, it's pretty unrealistic. I guess I sort of feel like if the assessment on my house is going to rate, there's got to be some limit to it, because almost forty percent, that's, that's, that's kind of unreal. I'm, I'm not sure what they see now that they didn't see last year. I realize that there's been some properties, smaller houses, that have sold for a certain amount of money, but I really hope that you guys take a look at what's going on and maybe set up some regulations so that the assessments cannot increase by whatever they feel like increasing them by, and maybe have like, you know, they can increase, but they can only increase by a set amount per year. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Go ahead and step up, please.
Good evening. My name's Haley Ivanoff. I'm here tonight to express I hope we can lower the mill rate. My husband and I own a home in Manashka on Bayview Drive, and last week we opened our letter, and our home increased eighty thousand dollars. The best part about this is our home is not a livable dwelling. At the time of this assessment, it didn't have plumbing, it didn't have electrical, it was not framed. No one's living in it, yet it's close, worth close to half a million dollars. We can't afford the taxes when we don't live in the house. I don't know how we're going to be able to afford the taxes when we do live in the house. We're both born and raised here, and we hope to continue living here, but like many other people have expressed tonight, the first time both my husband and I looked at each other and said, I don't know if we can live here our whole lives and raise a family. I understand inflation and real estate has gone up, but I have a hard time believing a house without a livable dwelling can go up that much. My husband's a fisherman, and we know where that's headed. I work for a local nonprofit, and my property taxes are seventeen percent of my paycheck. That is not affordable living. Groceries have gone up, fuel has gone up, KEA has gone up, property taxes are crazy, and I please, please urge you to consider lowering the mill rate so that people like myself, young families can continue living here. If we don't do something, you're either going to continue to see people struggle or people are going to leave, and that's the end of the story. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you for coming forward. Okay, we'll take the caller, and if there's anyone else that would like to speak, please sign in.
You are now answering a call from the queue. Thank you for calling the Assembly. Please state your name for the record.
Ron Kavanaugh?
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, hey, good evening, Simley. Yeah, I'm just kind of regurgitating everything everybody else has said, but I think you've got a memorandum in front of you where you're talking about supporting the processing industry because of how bad things are, and I think you need to take your cues from there because they're not going to get better in the next year or two. We've got the Coast Guard coming in, but that's not going to help. Just like the speakers before me have said, you're, you're going to run the young people out of town, and if you run them out of town, we're not going to have a workforce. If you run me out of town, you're not going to lose much, but we'll probably take the boats with us and everything else, but it's my crew and the people that are trying to live here, and I just really encourage you to look at reducing this mill rate, because I know it may look like a big windfall when you look at it, but it's, what, what are the expenses of this windfall? What's the down-the-road repercussions of this? You know, I understand everybody's prices have went up, but ours have went up with everybody else's, and we've taken a huge hit in our income. And what we've had to do is tighten our belts, not go on vacation, not buy coffee at the coffee shop, and on and on. You know, we just can't pull money out of the trees. I can't cut my crew's, uh, crew share because my expenses just went up. So I just really encourage you guys to, you know, do what you can to look at reducing that mill rate, because it's the young people that you're going to run out of town. Yeah, it's, then that's what's going to really hurt the town ten years down the road here, so, thanks.
Thanks for calling in, Ron. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak, please do it this time. We're going to go ahead and close citizens' comments. There is another spot at the end of the meeting there, too. So, next item we got is public hearing. It's ordinance number FY 2024-12. An ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.35 Real Property Tax, Section 3.35.050, Board of Equalization. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2024 hyphen 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seema is here tonight to go over this ordinance.
Good evening. This is the last time that you're going to see this. This ordinance before you is bringing the language in KIBC 3.35050 in to reflect the correct verbiage as determined by the State of Alaska Supreme Court.
Thank you. Any questions of the Assembly at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and recess the regular meeting, open the public hearing. The local number is nine oh seven four eight six three two three one. Toll-free number is eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. And I ask that you sign in, state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Anybody wishing to come forward and, and speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, Assembly discussion. Any questions? Larry?
Just a question. We're changing the language. The burden of proof rests with the appellate. Must convince the board, in the old language, by clear and convincing evidence, and then we're replacing that with a preponderance of evidence. Which one puts the greater burden of proof on the appellate?
The way it is right now. We are making it so that it will be easier for the appellate.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ledoux?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Next item is ordinance number FY 2024-14. An ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending the Kodiak Island Borough personnel, personnel rules and regulations to add a travel policy. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2024 hyphen 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance will establish an official travel policy for all staff elected and appointed officials that are traveling on official borough business. We've lacked an official policy, and as travelers return to the borough, we're looking to make sure that everyone understands the standards and regulations and benefits of travel.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, vote. Oh, excuse me. I'm getting ahead of myself. We will recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Public hearing, phone numbers are local- Public hearing phone numbers are local number nine oh seven four eight six three two three one. Toll-free number eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. Uh, I'm asked that you sign in, state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, Assembly discussion. Any discussion? Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Ladue?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item we have is the Borough Manager's Report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we are working on budget year twenty twenty-five, department directors are going to start attending work sessions with time for Assembly members to ask questions about their specific department's budget. This will begin at our next work session on March fourteenth with the Information Technology Department, which is Fund one hundred dash one two five. Before that happens, I'll make sure we send out to the Assembly members the most updated version of that department's budget so you can take a look at it. In previous years, and including when I sat on the Assembly, I got a big old budget book, and I just was overwhelmed and didn't even know where to start with questions. So my hope on having individual departments and a focus with different departments on different nights will be that we can kind of focus the attention on that department. You can, of course, ask any question at any time because the budget has to be approved as a whole, but we're gonna just try to focus on department. So we'll give this a try. Next work session on the fourteenth will be I T. So there'll be a few of you will know what they're talking about, and I'll have Fred here so he can explain what the ins and outs are of that various budget. Yes, I do believe that Mayor Arnt will be very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Uh, this week I met with Mike Litzow from Nova, from Nova. I was looking at Lena and thinking about Nova, Noah. And, um, we, he called me, and we've been working on the possibility of, um, a staff member from Noah to staff the front desk position at the touch tank so we can have that open. So we're going, starting March nineteenth, the touch tank will be open on Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons from twelve to four. Noah is going to do it on Thursdays in the afternoon, and K I B staff is gonna do it on Tuesdays in the afternoon. So we'll have regular openings to the public, so we're really excited about that. In the report, I've listed the normal, uh, times for March and April. There'll be a couple of special days on the eleventh and twelfth because that coincides with Comfish. And so though, on the eleventh and twelfth, it'll be open from ten to four. We will be posting this on the website and at the door at the touch tank so the community knows that there's gonna be access. We're also gonna look at the summer schedule and see how that, uh, plays out with cruise ships and what we can do to accommodate some of those schedules as well. But I'm really excited to get that resource back, and staff is working on making the copies of flyers for the informational materials that go in the touch tank now. The Health Facilities Advisory Board met this week at Providence. We discussed ongoing projects with both the chillers and automatic transfer switches. We also discussed the sections of the lease that I mentioned in our last work session, which are twenty point four and twenty point six of that lease, uh, that discuss how R and R is defined and how capital projects are defined. We also discussed about the importance of prioritizing work and how more money is generated if we can't stay within the confines of that enterprise fund. So it was a very fruitful discussion. I think everyone is on the same page. Dale Ron was here from Big Providence Real Estate that is in charge of real estate for the State of Alaska, and he was very helpful in facilitating the conversation. Um, as we try to follow that lease more closely, and one of those exhibits is that timeline that says by the end of March, we will have a list of projects for R and R for the Assembly to see. So we're meeting the week of the eighteenth, uh, to create that list, that prioritized list so we can start following that lease a little more closely. So we're excited to get back in touch with that. Uh, this week, we started, uh, developing a grant management process. Every individual grant, whether it's local or state or federal, are so vastly different. It's easy to get lost in quarterly reports or whenever their reports are due and who's in charge of what. So we're just kind of standardizing the process with the form at the beginning of grants, including who tells the Assembly or going for a grant, and does the Assembly need to know? And does the Assembly need to approve when we get money? All those questions in a form, and then who the project manager is for that grant, and kind of just standardizing that process. The Alaska Municipal League held a Zoom meeting this week about municipal ordinances regarding guiding and lodges. It happened during agenda setting, but I sent someone from Community Development to it. And A I is amazing because you can just tell it to type out everything that was said if you record it. So by the time I was out of agenda setting, I had a typed-out copy of what was said by all the different communities. I know that you're gonna be interested in that, Assembly Member Whiteside. So people are looking at different ways for different revenue, and some communities are successful in capturing, um, revenue from those transient populations in their community. Uh, the city announced this week that there's a ribbon-cutting and grand opening ceremony at Beranoff Park Recreation Center. It's gonna be held on Saturday at five thirty P M. And right after that is gonna be the annual Towny versus Coasty, uh, hockey game. There's door prizes if you wear blue and gold to the event. So just wanted to make sure you knew about that. For job openings at the borough, we are currently advertising for a general accountant in finance, a laborer in engineering facilities. Our current laborer has announced that he is not going to stay on after his six months. And this week, we also listed a project manager for engineering facilities. And I, I believe I heard we've gotten a couple of applications for that already. So we're excited about, uh, the prospect of bringing some new folks on. In agenda setting, we often talk about upcoming topics, and I realize that the Assembly might not know what to get excited about. So this week's report lets you know what's going to be coming in on the March fourteenth, March twenty-eighth, and April eleventh, um, work session topics. So in addition to our departments going over their budgets on the fourteenth, we're also gonna be looking at the healthcare space study analysis on March twenty-eighth. We're gonna be looking at the procurement process and procurement code. Uh, also the legislative, oh, hi clerks. We're gonna be going over the clerks' department budget on March twenty-eighth. I'll let Nova know when she gets back, and the legislative and the managers' department on the twenty-eighth. And then April eleventh, I have not decided who is gonna go yet as far as budgets, but, uh, right now is the use of K I B land because that is a common subject that comes up on how we wanna handle the land that we have and it's, if it's developable right now. Um, in community development, Alaska Municipal League is also running conversations on short-term rentals. Um, people from Sika, Sadatna, Gerwood, and all across the state are talking about how their communities are dealing with short-term rentals. So we're joining that conversation. There was just, the second meeting happened on March sixth. Our Community Development Director went to that. He has not learned the A I trick yet, but it's coming. So we'll be able to provide transcripts and know what's happening in those meetings without actually attending. So that's pretty exciting development in the A I world. Planning and zoning, um, the commission is, has an upcoming work session on March thirteenth. There's a subdivision case. There's also amendments to A D U ordinance and related sections to A D Us. And the Community Development Director has worked with our attorney to actually rewrite Chapter seventeen, uh, which relates to rezones and code amendments. And we're gonna be spending a lot of time looking at definitions and bringing those definitions so they're more, uh, up to date with how we're actually using things in the community. Bed and breakfast today means a lot more than a bed and breakfast in someone's house where they actually serve you breakfast, but our code has not adjusted with the way that we look at that stuff. We're looking to bring some of that stuff up to date. On March fourth, we had a multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan kickoff meeting. Uh, it was Zoom. We had, uh, two villages participate. We had the State of Alaska representative there, all of Community Development was there. I was there and the mayor was there, so we got that started. There are a couple more meetings coming up for that, for public input on April second and April twenty-sixth. The Community Development does a really good job of explaining why that plan is important, and they're sending out emails to a large group of stakeholders to try to get people to come in. One of those will be a Zoom meeting, and the other will be in person. They also, this week, got their grant application into A R P, um, for the professional services to create the plans and the permit process with Alaska Department of Fish and Game to provide beach access out in the White Sands area. So we're really excited about improving access, um, ability out in that area. We got an email back that said they got the grant, but we don't have a timeline yet, and one will have answers. But A R P is much more efficient than, say, our pro housing grant that we applied for months ago and still have yet to hear anything. I expect that we would know within a month on that grant. Um, right now in the Senate, there is a bill that requires all, uh, local communities with assessing powers to ensure that their assessors have a level three, um, certification. There is no certification level requirement right now in the state. So they're going for this level three requirement. I bring this up because today, our assessor got her level five, which is the highest you can get certification. So I'm really, really excited for Seema and the borough, and that, that's a, uh, a big deal for her. So congratulations to our assessor. Um, we talked a lot tonight and heard a lot of public comment about the notice of value forms that were mailed out on the twenty-ninth of February. As Seema said in public comment, and I just wanna reiterate, we do have an appeal period. Uh, March first, I wrote thirtieth, but the thirtieth is a Saturday. So it's really gonna go March first through March twenty-ninth, um, is the appeal period for those notice of values. Assessing has an appeal room. It's immediately when you walk in. When you walk into the borough, if you just tell the front desk that you're here to appeal your property from, and someone from assessing comes out and meets you in that room. If that room is busy, they'll meet with you somewhere else, but you get a one-on-one, in-person review of your property. Um, you can call in and talk. You can come in person and talk. You can email. If you want to call, it's nine oh seven four eight six nine three five three. But this is the time. You have until the twenty-ninth. Once that rule is certified in May, those numbers don't change. So this is your month to get in there and do that. Um, the assessment code that we're required to follow is an Alaska state statute that requires us to follow the full and true value. And it says the assessor shall assess property at its full and true value as of January first of the assessment year, except, and there's some exceptions that apply to farm and agricultural land and the property that's been affected by disaster. So the questions that come in and the comment that I've heard over and over is that many community members were under the impression that the law was eighty percent. So when you got your, your notice of value, if you added twenty percent to that, you could say, ooh, that's how much my house might be worth if I sell it. But that's not what the law is, and if we fall too low, the state assessor kinda slaps our knuckles with their ruler metaphorically, and they say you need to raise your values. And if you don't raise your values to an acceptable level, we will come in and do it for you. And what that looks like in communities who experience that is they send ten people down that you pay for. You buy their plane tickets. You pay for their hotel rooms. You buy their rental cars. And they assess every single property, remote, not remote, all the service districts, all the city, and they set your values, and you live with it, and you, and that's where your value is set. So that's some of the reasoning behind what's happening right now so that we avoid that state look. But if you have questions, the staff is outstanding. As you heard from public comment tonight, they're very good at walking you through your property or properties, as the case may be. So please, uh, take a look at that option and come in and talk. Um, I think I said last week that all twenty twenty-three reconsiderations are done. We have four this year. Staff is working on those, uh, between appeals. And the, a new assessing clerk, clerk started this week, and I feel a little bit bad because she started in a little bit of a hectic week in assessing. But I pulled her aside and talked to her today, and so far, everything is going really well. So, uh, she just started on Monday, uh, so she's made it through day four, so that's great. I have a long list of what I T is doing. If you have any questions about that, on the fourteenth would be an excellent time because Fred will be here, and you can ask him if you have any questions. Um, in engineering and facilities, I mentioned the Hospital Facilities Advisory Board and what we were doing there. Um, the, we also brought that health facility space evaluation to the Architectural Review Board today, so they got to take, have a chance to look at it. Um, I told you last week about the flooding incident that happened, um, over at the old mental health facility. We have a local contractor that's gonna work with us to do the testing to make sure that it's safe for people to go in there and get that cleaned up. Uh, we have elevator, elevator upgrade projects going at the hospital, K F R C, and the middle school. So there is a state inspector that was in town this week that gave us some pointers and apparently has some magical oil that made the K F R C elevator not squeak anymore. So everyone's very happy about that. Um, I swear I'm almost done. Um, Solid Waste Contract Committee, we have another meeting on March nineteenth at one P M. Um, the new excavator is in service at the landfill. Um, Brecken was actually able to come out and provide training because they're familiar with that type of excavator. So it is in service, and we're happy to see the new equipment out there. We have the discharge permit at K F R C. Part of that requirement, even though we haven't changed the system, but because we have that permit now, if we have to do sampling and testing on a more regular basis, so that part has started, and that's ready to go out. I'm hoping next week, uh, for R F P to get that work done as soon as we identify if it's an R and R project or not and how we're gonna pay for it. At the school district, um, with the North Star roof replacement, or roof and skylight replacement, uh, the board discussed, um, alternate bidding schedules by breaking out different parts of that roofing section. So we're waiting for, uh, the design to come back that say the price is on the different parts. Um, the current base bid we have is over two point five million with the skylight, uh, being just under four hundred thousand. So we're looking at different options for that roof. Peterson Roof, uh, we are scheduled to start at the end of April. If it's weather, and the only question that we have with the Coast Guard right now is what hours we're allowed to work. The contractor would like to work if it's light out, but as the summer progresses, the people who live next door would never sleep. Um, Sergeant Creek Park Equipment bid opening is scheduled for tomorrow, so we're excited to see who comes out for that. And, uh, in addition to the, what I told you already about the Architectural Review Board, they also reviewed the chillers and the automatic transfer switches. I heard there was even three or four mayors at the meeting today.
Four.
I was, I was told by the current mayor, look, there's three mayors in the room. And I was like, one, two, three, four. So he needs to work on some math. And, um, I just, the, the knowledge that is in that room and the depth of experience, the solutions that they come up with are just outstanding. That is a really great board, and if any of them are listening, thank you for coming in and offering your expertise on those issues because it is wonderful to see the community come in and ask questions that no one's even thought of. So thanks to those folks that are on that board, and that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Amy. Looks like we have questions. Scott, and then Ryan?
Um, my wife is on the school board, and, uh, a number of people were frustrated with some of the potential cuts that the school district was going to have to make, make, given the infirmities in funding, particularly from the state. Uh, my wife then took it upon herself to write up several important reviews of what the background information was, and those were published both in Facebook and, uh, some of them in the newspaper, and they were really well received. People seemed quite pleased to get the information. Given the number of people that showed up here tonight about the assessment and some of their statements, it seems to me that we should be doing the same thing with our assessing department in terms of explaining what we did with their assessments, why we did it, and how that pertains to things like mill rates. So maybe we can do that. I'm happy to, uh, help in any way I can. Certainly as an editor, less so as a drafter, but I'll help.
Thank you, Scott. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let's see. I am extremely happy that we were able to think outside the box and employ a local contractor to get our excavator online, so I appreciate you doing that. That was frustrating to see that we were continuing to wait on training, so thank you for making that happen. I wanna point out to those, uh, that are listening about what we're doing for physical responsibility, and it's the micronutrients that go into the physical responsibility. So our middle school elevator upgrade, um, I see that we're now working with the Alaska Elevator Inspector. That is a service the state provides, and I want everyone to understand that this is not a contractor. This is a free service from the state, and, and previously, we were working with a contractor. So I just wanted to give you a great shout. you a great shout out for that resource. And finally, the new, the new excavator is going to be the, the new latch on for the excavator is going to be this leachate treatment plant. So I again am becoming growingly frustrated seeing that we're continuing to work with an engineering firm for our new system to meet the gallon per minute requirement. I am not excited to continue to see this on our Borough Managers Report. And I'm hoping that we can come to a very swift resolve because it's, there's a specification that was designed. There's a procurement process that was followed. Now there's a control process in place and it's not being met. So there's got to be some form of a warranty. There's got to be some form of a replacement. But if they're not meeting the contract requirements, in, in my world, this would be constituting of liquidated damages. So I'm looking for some form of accountability for our projects to meet design specifications. That's all. Thank you.
Amy, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. So we got a quote today, if you will, on replacement pumps to try to meet that spec for $39,000. And we, you know, we had been pushing back and they took like 39,000. And so they gave a, a discount of 4,500. And I, I said, send it back. We pay $0. So I absolutely agree with you. I think that staff is doing a good job identifying where the flaws were and who should have. I agree with you. We have a contract. It says a spec will be met on that flow. It is not being met. So the project just isn't done. And so we're, we're not paying them more money to get us to where we contracted them to get. So I don't think we are used to doing a lot of pushback, but we absolutely are on this. Thank you.
Thank you both. James?
So somebody brought up the famous large page, MAPTOR. Okay. So my question to you is simply, the question was, can you explain it a little bit better? So on here, it says that our max is 16,144,487. Would you, okay. So that is after the FY 20, for FY 2025, base plus true up plus inflation, which is three different numbers in there, which adds up to 16,144,487. To me, the way that this is written, doesn't matter what mill rate we come up with. It doesn't matter what, I shouldn't say that. It, it matters if we lower it. It matters. We wouldn't be able to reach this at the last year's assessed value. So my question to you is, is that the true number that everybody should be looking at is the max that we could be looking for collection? Because I have other further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. So MAPTOR stands for the maximum allowable property tax revenue. Our code, which if you're into code numbers, is 3.25030. And it lists out that the property tax revenue collected in fiscal year 2025 cannot surpass revenue collected in fiscal year 2024. There's a few exceptions. We can raise the level for taxes on new construction improvements. That's a number that I do not know yet. We can raise it for voter approved services. So if in the last election, the voters would have said, I want public transit to go throughout the borough, and I'm willing to pay a tax for it, we could add it for that. We can add it for judgments that were paid in the previous year in litigation cases. We can raise it for special appropriations on an emergency basis. If we would have needed, if COVID hit and we had zero resources and we had to raise taxes, we could have done it for that. And there's something called a prior year true up. If there's taxes that you could not collect in the year before, but were inside of that cap, you can collect them the next year. That number for fiscal year 2024 is $68,259. So that gets added to what we collected in fiscal year 24. And by the way, this is on our Facebook page, this sheet that I'm looking at. And it's also on the news flash on the Kodiak Island Borough website. You can click on the graphic. And then we can also add inflation. For this year, the Urban Alaska Consumer Price Index is 1.5%. So the amount that we can add to the tax cap is $237,580, which is down considerably from fiscal year 24 because that year was an 8.1% increase. I think we all enjoyed the increase in gas and groceries that year significantly. Last year's was 1.5. So it's, it's controlled. So when we add all of those numbers together, what we could collect in 2024, the true up plus inflation, we are at 16,144,487. There are not voter approved services.
Could you say that again? Because I think that was a-
Oh, 16,144,487. Thank you. So there's not any judgments that we paid in the previous year or special appropriations. So the only thing that we are dealing with is prior year true up and inflation, which we know. So we are still waiting on taxes for new construction and improvements. And that will give us what our total tax cap, because that's what we call it, because it MAPTOR, used to be MATER. So tax cap is something that everyone can wrap their heads around. So no matter what the total value is that comes up, that is a level that we cannot pass when we are paying into the general fund, education support, or renewal and replacement. So if you're at home and you're on your computer, that infographic tells you all the funds that it applies to and all the funds it doesn't apply to. It does not apply to our enterprise funds because we don't use taxpayer money for the hospital or the landfill or the KFRC or any of those buildings. So it does apply to the money that we will give the school and how we run the borough government.
Thank you for that answer. That's much appreciated. I'm sure that it helped a lot of people tonight. Can I-
Continue.
Continue. So the way that I see it is that if, could you state what the mill rate is right now?
10.25 is the base.
Let me fix my math here. So basically, if we use the same assessment value that we used last year at 10.25, then we are looking at 18 million five, and I'm going to throw these numbers out there. So I'm, 18,553,845 at 10.25, which is over our MAPTOR. And so in order to adjust for that, then we would have to go down to a lower mill rate just so that we can be within our maximum allowable.
Yes.
Correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
So hopefully, people are hearing all of that. The, the difference is, and the only difference is, is if the assembly felt that they needed to change or raise the mill rate for this year because of the school district having a little bit bigger ask, because of other projects that are going on, we could, somebody on the assembly could bring forward a cancellation of the MAPTOR because we voted on it last year, I believe. So at this point, it's in the assembly's hands to raise or, or to keep the MAPTOR or, or get rid of it prior to final budget discussions. Or we could keep the MAPTOR and more than likely, depending on what the assessed, assessed values come in at, we're probably going to have to lower the mill rate a little bit because of the MAPTOR.
Yes, I would agree with that statement. The assembly has a variety of choices they could use. They can change exemptions. They can raise senior disabled veterans. It, we have to do 150,000 because that's what the state tells us to do. We can do more than that, which would change the amount of property tax revenue that came in. We can lower the mill rate. There's, there's a variety of choices that you have.
So since there's a, a lot of discussion tonight, you guys are going to be working on what that would be if it was a $50,000 increase or some, something like that for senior exemptions or, or veterans exemptions. And I'm not saying that that's a number. I'm just saying, somebody's, somebody's going to ask it sometime, I'm sure.
I have already spoke with-
I figured you had.
Yes.
I wanted the public to know, though. So the other piece of that is assessing is doing their job the way that they're supposed to be doing it. I really appreciate their efforts. And for them to take on all of the heat for this, the, the, the real blame will have to lie on all of us, whether or not we change the MAPTOR, whether or not we decide to stick with the MAPTOR this year, and whether or not we want to go to the full value of 16,144 to fund all of the project or all of the projects and the school district and, 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 and. And since we're just now starting to take that first bite, there's a lot to think about. Thank you. And I appreciate your answers.
Scott and then Bo.
Do we know what it's going to cost for government? We had negotiations with the unions that increased our salary responsibility. So is the sum of the potential ask from the school district at 13 plus, plus the cost of doing government for the borough going to exceed 16?
Yes, but property tax revenue is not the only revenue that we have.
Yes.
So our, the, the ask from the school district, I think, is going to be about 12.3, not 13. You scared me for a second there. And so the, the, that plus the cost of running the borough does not fit within the 16. But we do, we do have severance tax and payment and lieu taxes for the federal governments. There's several sources of income that are outside of property tax. So that it will be up to the assembly. I, I, I shall not answer your question directly. I'm avoiding.
Chicken. Thank you. Bo and then James?
Thank you. I'm glad we're having this discussion. I hope a lot of people who are here in person are listening or will stream this later. So for clarification, if we do nothing as far as the MAPTOR is concerned, there is, we will likely have to reduce, reduce the mill rate to meet the maximum cap within those guidelines. However, that doesn't necessarily mean people are not going to pay more in property taxes, correct?
Correct. So we, it just depends on your individual situation. As you heard tonight, there's a lot of variation on how people's property tax change. And there's a lot of different factors that went into assessment this year. There was a lot of leveling that happened. And I, what I mean by that is if you have five pieces of property with the same topography, when the assessing team went in and looked, different properties will have different reductions because they haven't, they don't have a good way to get on their property, or it's too steep in the back, or they don't have a good buildable surface. So what they attempted to do was to treat everyone the same, which is my motto on treating all property owners and all staff members. Everyone gets the same treatment. So that's a, there's a lot of different cases that happened. That's why we're encouraging, if you see something, come in and ask so you can understand what happened on your property.
May I continue?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, so just for clarity, for those that are, that are concerned, if we leave the MAPTOR in place, that, and, and the mill rate is lowered, that way we are adhering to the cap, that does not necessarily mean that your cost of living is going to remain the same or go down. It could still go up. I think we need to be transparent in what we're communicating.
I believe last year, when the mill rate went down a half a point, people, it did go down, but with assessments that went up, people didn't necessarily see a big reduction. But it would have went up less because the mill rate went down. So because my job is what my job is, I have an idea of what our value is at, or what it was on February 29th. And so while that's not something that's available for public consumption right now because it literally changes hour by hour as people come in and appeals change, we're going to be significantly over MAPTOR. So something will have to be done in one way or the other to adjust that. So the people's appealing for the rate to go down, that will be something that the assembly can absolutely consider, even with the school district ask.
Thank you.
James and then Ryan?
So do we, at this point, and I know it's really early, do we have any indication on whether or not the state is going to pay their bond debt portion this year?
There hasn't been any talk about not.
It's in the budget.
And it is in the budget to be fully funded.
And how well do you trust a veto?
Don't ask.
I do, I do.
I'm nervous about that all the time, right? I didn't, I was nervous last year when we just assumed that, that it was going to get paid and that, that really hurts us if it doesn't because then we're taking money out of other funds and we can't do projects and it ties our hands for an entire year. So I, no one has an answer to that. But when the governor had his press comments on education, he was kind of all over the place, but you just, it's, it's a very hard read. I will reach out to our lobbyist to see if he has any more insight on that.
One more?
Go ahead, James.
So with the MAPTOR, the bond debt is not part of the MAPTOR. So if we are going to assume that there is no state reimbursement, we're talking about close to 604, or excuse me, 6.4 million, somewhere around there.
Roughly 5.8 million is our-
Oh, sorry.
Is what we get from the state.
Right, 5.8 million. But we also have to take some from taxes. So when you add all of that up, it's roughly 6.4, if I remember correctly, that we would have to make up with taxes.
Or other forms.
Or other forms. But that does not necessarily mean that that's going to happen either. What I'm trying to say is, we could stay at the 16, 16,144,478, which brings our, which brings our mill rate down more than likely. But if we don't believe that we're going to get any of that reimbursement, we're going to have to raise that mill rate from whatever it's going to be. I could tell you what I, what number I have, but I'm not going to. It's probably going to be the same mill rate this year if we think that we're not going to get that reimbursement, if, if you will. How do you feel?
Is that a question?
The last part was, how do you feel about the-
Okay, how do I feel? I believe that when we're making decisions based off the governor's line item veto for appropriations, it makes me nervous. But I, because I think every community in AML has really spoke out, and I think that he's hearing that messaging, that he is aware of the issue and how it affects communities. I will reach out to Mark Hickey, look at me shove that answer off, to see if he has any more insider feelings on that. That's a, that's a tough one. And I know we rolled the dice last year, but that was a completely different situation than it is this year, especially with the fishing industry bearing, being where it is. When we get into budget discussions, you'll see some very big changes in what we expect in severance tax because it's very hard to try to determine what that's going to be this year. And so that's, we have to be able to account for that as well.
Thank you. That's it.
I'm going to go hit Ryan's next, but I'm going to interject a little here because it's appropriate time. In regards to, yeah, I think it is. So in regards to the bond debt reimbursement, five years ago, when I got on the assembly, the state portion of that cost was roughly 105 million dollars a year. This year, it's right around 60 million. Next year, it goes down to 50 something million. Next year, we take a reduction to as our, part of our bond debt pays off. So- So, the state gets a break on that, too, along with other communities. So, I feel that we're down there a ways, that I don't feel it's as big a target as it has been in the past. And so, I think, and of course, we'll still talk with Mark Hickey, because he's there every day, and we'll see what he has to say, but I think it's reasonably secure, of course, reasonably. Until the governor runs his pen, we don't know. So.
Follow-up?
I'll follow you, and then Ryan.
Sorry. This is very important to me, because I've been through both. I've been through where they gave us nothing, promised us everything, and gave us nothing, and I've been through promising us nothing and giving us a little bit.
Yeah, giving us 50%, giving us 25%.
So, in years past, we budgeted for zero, expecting to get zero, and got something. But if we budget for a full bond debt reimbursement, and we fail to get that, I hate that word, so it's hard for me to say, if we fail to get the bond debt reimbursement, that would mean that our budget would be off by 5.3 million?
Right around there, give or take.
Give or take. I told you, I was throwing out rough numbers tonight. So, do we have anything in the coffers to cover that?
Yes, we do.
I would like to talk to our finance director before I answer that question with certainty.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me apologize that we've taken the manager's comments and turned this into a debate, so I want to get right to the point. I'd like to see four scenarios presented. I'd like to see what the senior and veteran exemption at $250,000 looks like for income. I'd also like to explore something, and if you'll humor me, I would like to see what a increased senior exemption for those over 75. So, that senior exemption would look at maybe 75% exemption. The third exemption that I'd like to have priced out, what we heard tonight in public comment, I'd like to see, at least for discussion purposes, I'd like to see a fisherman's exemption at $50,000. And finally, the one that actually bothered me the most tonight, I would like to look greatly into some form of a construction exemption, where if we're building a home and we can't live in it, why are we assessed at that value? And that's rhetorical, I don't need an answer, but I would like, at some point when we delve deep into this, I'd like to have that answered, because that one bothered me this evening. Thank you.
Amy.
Sorry, so I understand the 250,000, did you want that for senior and disabled, or just senior?
Yes, senior and disabled.
And then, for over 75?
50,000, yep.
And, we already dealt with the construction part.
Okay, Larry.
I think, as we talked about last night, the school district has absolutely no idea what kind of revenue they're going to have that they plan their budget on. It's just an insane process, and there's a lot of unknowns. They don't know how much the state's going to give, the federal government's going to give, they don't know the grants, and they have no idea what the borough is going to do, and they have no idea how many students they're going to have, and what category they're going to fall in with funding. Business as usual. The borough's in the same boat. You know, we don't know what we're going to get from the state until the governor does it, and we won't know for a long time. And, you know, discussions about what exemptions we're going to give, if we get this money, and we get this money, I think they create stress in the community sometimes, because they develop expectations, and we don't have any money to play with. We know that, we've had increased expenses at the borough this coming year, and we know the school district is requesting more money, and we know there are other costs related to fuel and inflation, which seems to be more than 1.1 at my house when I go shopping. But, in any case, there are so many unknowns that we have, that I think we have to be careful that we don't spend a lot of time on what-ifs. I think we've heard from the community tonight that we need to lower the mill rate, and we need to find ways to, any way that we can do that. Every time we add another exemption, we put a bigger burden on someone else in the community to fill the gap, regardless of what it is. And sometimes that gap falls on our youngest, and, you know, people, our young people, who are just starting out, we don't know, there's just so many ramifications. I just think that we have to do a good job in our discussions with regard to the borough, and like the school district is doing, to fund the budget that we can pay for, not what we need or what we want, but what we can pay for. And I think we really need to discuss those issues, and not talk about a lot of issues that are what-ifs. I do believe that the governor, and it doesn't mean anything more than anyone else, I think he will fund the bond reimbursement, simply because the big load for bond reimbursement, and guess what, it's the district that grew a lot and has a lot of money, because they grow every year, and they built a lot of buildings, and that's home territory, and districts around the state, and that's who it hits, Anchorage is a municipality, there's a lot of pressure, and as you know, these districts are hurting already, and they are a big part of these budgets. So, I just think we need to be very careful, I think the Assembly needs to dig into our budget and take a look at it, and see if we can firm up all of these numbers that we've been talking about, and then do good planning, and not waste a lot of time on things that will never happen, because that's my only concern. And other than, I will say in finality here, is that I hope we can lower the mill rate, I cannot see any reason why we can't. And, period, thank you.
Bo, and then Steve.
Thank you. Manager Williams, this has nothing to do with your report, but since everyone's taking a bite on this topic, I'm going to do the same. I agree that we need to do something. I don't feel that specifying specific portions of our demographic is the right answer. I think that creates rifts within the community. There's currently a pretty wide rift between two groups now. Based on just the people who came here in person to speak to us, and everyone who has spoken to me, and they are the reason I am sitting here right now, we need to address this for the community. We need to quit cherry-picking what we individually feel, or who we feel should get the attention. The community is hurting. The cost of living affects every individual here. We need to stop creating rifts in our community. It's causing more problems. People don't want to work together on this. If we're going to split out who gets help and who doesn't, everybody needs help right now. So, that is my bite I'm going to take. Thank you for your report, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Assemblymember Sherrod, they wholeheartedly say we can look at these numbers. At this point, I understand fishing is in a very tough situation. Having been a fisherman, fished the bay for some time, I always looked at it as a 10-year And, at various times, I've been a little disturbed when they say we need to give a lot of help to these fishermen, because prices are down, but they never volunteered to give any extra on record years. And so, I'm not sure that's generally fair for everyone. But, I also agree, we should look at the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions? As a manager. Seeing none, we'll move on to messages from the borough mayor. Basically, I'd like to report on the travels that Amy reported on last week a little bit, was in regards to her and my trip to Washington DC, and then also to Juneau. I was there a little bit before she got there for the National Association of Counties convention. I'm the Alaska Municipal League rep for Alaska. There was one community, one other community, that was there for the NACO meetings, and that was Ketchikan. And they were there last year, also. They used that as their opportunity to visit Alaska senators and representatives. What they did is they bring three Assemblymembers and their manager on there. So, it was interesting visiting with them. The mayor, Rodney Dial, and I are both very interested in increasing the amount of PILT money that Alaska boroughs get, because of federal property in our jurisdictions. And, so, NACO is continuing to help with that, and it's interesting. One of the things that, last year I found out, and this year, too, they're continually working on is part of the roadless rule in their area, because they have so much forced reproperty that they're not allowed to access on there. So, but it was very interesting, it's the first time I had the opportunity to speak to the Coast Guard on that level. They, we were very well-received. Senator Sullivan, and Senator Murkowski's staff, and Mary Petola, we were able to, representative, we were able to meet in the hallway, to and from votes that she was going to. And it was very interesting, as Amy had said, about two sons in the Coast Guard, and the two that are in there fighting, looking at, fighting over the bonus that is given for recruiting their brother, if he goes to the Coast Guard. So, anyway, it was, it was interesting, it was my first time speaking before Senate Finance and Senate Education. It was, it was, the mayors of boroughs and cities that had school districts were invited, and it was interesting, none of us planned it, but every one of us took a little different approach on what we spoke about, and it was, it was very interesting to find out after the meeting and speaking with Senator Tobin, the Chair, that as a young kid, she, her parents, her dad was state trooper and was stationed in Kodiak, and she remembered Kodiak, so she had done a bunch of traveling around the state. But it's interesting getting to know some of the personal messages of different senators and representatives in Juneau. There's not enough money to go around, there's a lot of decisions that are going to be made. It was very discouraging for Amy and I to find out that the Chinnyack Highway project was dropped off of the step in the commissioner's office, before we knew anything about it was that Thursday, two weeks ago. So, it's four more years before that road can get on there, and there are parts that won't last a year at the rate it's going. So, it's discouraging, but we'll continue to persevere and go through there. So, thank you for the opportunity to represent Kodiak in both Washington DC and Juneau. So, I guess the only other thing I would say is, if, I realize we have three new members here, but when we got the 12.3 million reimbursement on our shorted reimbursement on school debt, that is sitting in general fund, not obligated. Where do we dump it?
That money went to whatever fund it came from.
Right.
So, the portion that came from general fund went to general fund.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
I appreciate that. But it's gone back to other funds that we had taken it from, so there is some in there. We've also added other money there. We do have some money in general fund that could help pay at least a year's worth on there. So, that'll come out of the Finance Department as we get into the budget, and we'll go from there. So, next item on the agenda is under, new business is resolution. We have resolution number FY 2024-17, a resolution of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Boroughs supporting the Pacific Seafood Processors Association, efforts to improve competitiveness and resilience of the Alaska seafood industry. Scott?
Moved to adopt resolution number FY 2024-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Pacific Seafood Processors Association sent us, both the mayor and I, an email to request that we do this resolution in support of the seafood industry. We talked about it last week at the work session, and I wanted to personally thank Lena for putting it into resolution format for you tonight, and it's just something that they can add to their list of communities that agree with what they're saying here. I think it was very well done, and hopefully it'll pass tonight. Thank you.
Scott?
I just want to chime in on the nature of UFA and PSPA. These are really important organizations, which do a service in the state of Alaska for the fishing industry, and they're, this is a valuable thing for us to do, is to sign this resolution.
Bo.
Thank you, I agree, this was very well-authored. Whomever, or whether it was an individual or multiple people within this organization who wrote this, did a beautiful job of not turning this into a sector-specific resolution, or favoring one side of the industry over another. It was very well-done, so I completely support this.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Ledoux?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrod?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you. Next item is citizens' comments. This is, local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Please sign in and state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to a member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Court.
Hi, my name is Court Neff. I have another, I didn't quite finish before, so proactive suggestion, another one, if the planning assembly does end up, after public hearing, approving inordinate loosening restrictions on ADUs, I would consider a proactive thing to, go ahead, you guys pass that. As far as the bed and breakfast, what I was trying to say was, I disagree with the idea, the premise, that we need to eliminate some short-term rentals, so we can have more regular rentals. I don't think that's the right premise. However, I do see that there has been an explosion in a way that wasn't meant to be, where people are taking homes, and they're not living in them, and they're just turning into a hotel, basically, and that's unfair competition to people that build duplexes and fourplexes in hotels, according to code, with all the other restrictions. And, so I do think the idea of looking at, it may result in reducing some bed and breakfast, but I do think there is a need to look at some of the regulations, maybe registration or some things you guys talked about last meeting, still probably is a good idea. It is a serious thing in the community, that 80% of our economy is run by people basically getting government money, or tax dollars, is how it is. We've got education, medical field, if I'm right, wasn't that in the spending budget? Anyways, it was in somewhere, I think it was in the budget, yearly budget manual, it showed. It showed the proportions of people, it was like 80%. That's not a sustainable economy, especially the way the government's headed, federal government, state, it's all. So we, I did hear some good proactive ideas about how to reduce the tax or make the, adjust the taxes. I thought there was merit to the senior idea because seniors are a stable, non-tax absorbing economy and they're just taking out their social security and their investments. And that might be a good way to help boost things. And the idea of people involved in private sectors, but then I, there was a lot of merit in being unfair. How do you selectively just help one economy or one occupation or something like that? That wouldn't be quite right. Anyways, I think I had a couple other things, but I'll let you guys go home or do your, you probably have a lot more on your agenda. So thanks anyways, that's all I got.
Thank you, Court. Anybody else wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. Any phone calls? Okay, let's do the phone call.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Thank you for calling the Assembly, please take your name for the record.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Pavel Drogal. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening and I, my intention was to show up there and I got otherwise sidetracked due to issues with my business. So in regards to the assessment values in the property, my property went up $68,900 for, for my house here, my residence in 2024. And I heard it stated that, you know, there was an increase in 2023 and a reduction in the mill rate and maybe it may not have been noticed, but in, from 2022 to 2023, my property went up $69,100 and again this year, $68,900. And looking back from 2016, there was sale increase, 17, it increased by $700. 2018 zero increase, 2019 $200, 2020 zero dollars, 2021 $28,400 and 2022 $10,400. Now, if you average that out over that period, it would have been $22,000 increase over, average over the years. But why I'm stuck with, you know, almost $140,000 over the last two years, I'm not too sure. And that's a big financial hit, I mean, you're talking a couple of thousand dollars in additional property tax for, you know, just, just, just my home, not a commercial business or nothing. So I think you guys need to address this and, and, and do something with the, with the mill rate and not price everybody out of this community, it's getting ridiculous to live here. I, I, I think I'm paying about $11,000 based on this new assessment and property tax and that's, that's crazy. And if I, you know, my house is my home, I'm not going to sell it regardless of the value, I'm going to leave it to my kids. But unfortunately, my kids are not going to be able to afford it with, with a tax rate like that. So again, you need to look at what's going on with the economy of Kodiak. Fishery, salmon tax is going to be down, the price of pork is down to nine cents a pound from 14 last year. Salmon were in an off year and it's not looking good for anybody. The global economy is in the toilet and, you know, you had a McDowell report done 2015, I think it was, on, on, on economic report on fisheries, I think we need to look at that, doing something along them lines again and assess where we are. Fisheries is the economic driver for the Kodiak community and I think in you guys setting budgets and increasing assessments in property, you need to evaluate what's going on in, in this industry because we are the economic engine of what's happening around Kodiak. So thank you for your time and I hope you consider all the public common state.
Thank you for calling in. Anyone else wishing to come and speak under Citizens Comments? Oh, one more? Let's take that call.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Good evening, thank you for calling the Assembly, please take your name for the record.
Stephen Foss.
Okay, did you turn your radio off?
We're getting feedback.
Okay. Go ahead and speak up a bit, please.
Yeah, my name's Stephen Foss and I've heard a lot of testimony tonight about lowering the rates. You don't have to lower the rates, but what you do have to do is prevent these people, I've got three properties, one that didn't go up in value, one that went up nearly 12%, another one that went up nearly 54%. But to limit the amount that you can, that you can raise the tax by some percentage rate, whether it's 3%, 5%, 10% is a lot. So I don't know how you would do that. I know in Florida, there's a Homestead Act and if you're homesteaded, it's 3%. If you're not homesteaded, it's 8%. But it prevents this big swing in, I paid $3,000 this year and $5,000 the next year in taxes because my property value went up 60%. So, and then for you to reduce your, I don't know, figure it out. But that's the big issue is the property rates going up in regards to what our assessed value is. And I've heard this thing about the state, I'm still not quite under, don't understand where they're going to come in and assess our value, I'm not, somehow I'm not catching on to that over my head, so. That's it, there's other ways to do it other than just reducing the rate. Just change how much percentage from year to year that it can go up for taxes.
Thank you for calling in.
That's it.
Any other calls? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak before the Assembly? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close Citizens Comments. Next item is Assembly Member Comments and we'll start with James.
No comment, thank you.
Stephen?
I'll just say I appreciate the people who came in, expressed their opinion, it's always good to hear from the public. Other than that, no comment.
Thank you. Beau?
Thank you. First off, congrats SEMA. That's very awesome that you are not only meeting but exceeding your level of certification. Thank you, Amy, for continuing to explore and identify cost efficient, efficient solutions to some of these problems we've been having. That's something that, that I believe every department works on. I'm glad to see we're gaining some progress there. Cost savings is always something that's going to help. Thank you to everyone who came here and spoke to us tonight. I, I know a lot of people in the community, perhaps some of you who are here tonight feel that your concerns are being ignored and have been ignored or perhaps equally bad, trivialized or marginalized and that they're not as important as other concerns for other people. You are all the reason I am sitting up here and dedicating time to address the cost of living and the housing crisis are the top two things I hope we can work on. But please know that as, coming from myself, every single person, I don't care what your job is, I don't care if you're in school, you have children, you don't have children, every single one of you matters in this community. If you feel like you, people have been expressing opinions to make you feel like you don't, I apologize for that. Just know that you do matter. Every person here is part of our community. We want all of you to stay here, we want everyone to thrive. Everyone is feeling the pressure of increased costs of groceries, fuel prices, electric prices, taxing or taxation in different forms, whether it's your vehicle, your home, city sales tax. All of it is squeezing every single one of us in this community. So please know I hear you, I have heard you, that's why I'm up here. I will never marginalize your concern, no matter who you are or what you do or where you came from. We hope you can stay and we hope we can help make it to where not only you're surviving but thriving.
Larry?
Thank you and thank you for those comments that you just made, I agree with many of them, I appreciate you saying them. A couple of things, I want to just recognize Assembly Member Turner for the work that he does on the budget. I've been here and listened to budget discussions in my previous position and, and being on the Assembly. I, you do tremendous work on the budget and you make it easy for all of us. I know you know it thoroughly and I know you proposed a budget and you do that every year and I think it just helps us all become better educated and more knowledgeable. And I want to thank you for that and I want to thank SEMA for all the work that she does. I was sitting here thinking, you know, I bet, I've had jobs that I thought were pretty tough and then I've discovered one that I think is really, really tough. And I think you do it well and I think that you pay close attention to the law and the regulations. So I, I, sitting here listening to citizens, many of who I know very well, talk about the cost of living in Kodiak and the challenges that they face. And I know that many are facing challenges just related to eating their house and paying their bills and paying their electricity bills. So I know that it's, it's really tough here and I think that the Borough Assembly has the ability through thoughtful analysis and listening to the community to do the best we can to ameliorate some of those concerns. I want to, I, the Assembly met with the School Board last night, I think it was a very, very effective meeting. I think that they gave a thorough analysis of the budget and I think everybody came away from that meeting knowing that the district and School Board is doing, working very, very hard. I would say that the cuts that they've proposed or the reductions in programs are unprecedented in history and I go back a long way and they will affect our school system. And this is happening all over the state. It's tough and I think, you know, it's one of, our community's going to have to really rally around the district and I'm hoping that the Governor will come through and help prevent those cuts. The problem when you're deal, when you're dealing with school districts is their business is kids. And when you're dealing with numbers and cuts, sometimes you think you're dealing with widgets, you know, instead of real kids that are affected. But I do appreciate the meeting and I appreciate the discussion that we had. Also, I did appreciate the Mayor's report on his trip to DC and I, and I really do. And I, I think that it helps for leadership to know and I appreciate some of the discussions in Juneau. And finally, you know, almost every meeting I talk about the importance of lands and I don't apologize for that because I think we've sort of clogged up, you know, our, our growth in our community. We can't grow without land, we can't grow without affordable housing and we have to be able to have land policies where people can build smaller houses instead of these baby boomer houses that, you know, people are living in and people can't afford to live in. And, and the recent comment that someone would like to leave their house to their children, but their children can't afford to pay for the taxes on it is probably true. But just some of the things that I think that we need to take a look at, and I do see that in the Managers' Report, the Mayor has set aside some time, and I believe early April, to talk about Borough lands. But some of the things that I think we need to be looking at as an Assembly, and I'll be very quick here, is to, we need to really work hard on releasing land to the Borough. I've been on a lands committee that we created the last time I was on the Assembly and it really didn't work very well. I never have seen so many regulations that stand in the way of just releasing land. And you almost need to, it just really bothers me, the Borough has land, we should be selling it. I think we should be working very, very hard to the state instead of just lobbying for money from the state and that they do all the things that they're supposed to do, they start turning over land to us. They own land in Kodiak that can be developed and we need to be looking for that. I also think the Borough needs to be actively collaborating with major landowners in Kodiak. We all know that a lot of land is held by both private individuals and native organizations. And I think we just need to find a way to work and develop incentives to develop that land. Many communities have tax breaks for land development to pay for resources and we need to be thinking about those things and to help make land available because as somebody said tonight, people will build. And I think, as I said, tax incentives, I appreciate the work the Planning and Zoning is doing on ADUs. I mean, if we get good ADU policies in place, we'll see a building boom in Kodiak because many people could add those to their houses which will allow people a pace to live and somebody could do it. I also believe that we need to really work with P&amp;Z to start developing small lot sizes for people to build small houses instead of building, you know, lots of 5,000, 4,000 square feet where people can put in a house that they can afford and perhaps build it themselves. I did hear a presentation by one of the HUD people, Housing and Urban Development, and they talked about 40-year interest-free infrastructure loans that communities can get from the federal government to develop land, to put water and sewer in which would open up land and allow for smaller lot sizes. So I also believe that the Borough needs to work closely with the new initiative in Kodiak Economic Development Committee. Am I saying that right? I think we need to find a way to really be partnering with them and the work that they're doing. They've done some tremendous leadership and are moving forward and I think John Wooden is their Executive Director and I think that we need to really embrace them. And finally, with regard to teacher housing, there are teacher housing grants available that will allow teacher housing to be constructed. If somebody will go after that money and find a place to do it, I think that that will alleviate some of the problems for staff. So having said all that, thank you.
Scott?
No comment.
Ryan?
Oh, I definitely have a comment. So let's start with the good, so SEMA, nice work, Level 5. And I understand you're already pursuing your next endeavor in future certifications, so good luck on those and keep striving. I would like to take a moment to encourage additional people to run for this Assembly. I have to tell you that nothing should be marginalized, no idea should be marginalized. Everything should be discussed and everything should be on the table. And I would really encourage a wide base of additional people that are interested to serve your community to do so. I'd also like to thank Sylvia, Dan, Court, Sean, Robert, Peter, Dave, Alexis, Misty, Ranzi, let's see, Nicholas, Levon, Heather, Peter, Diane, Young, Haley, Ron Kavanaugh, I'm going to butcher this name, the second to last caller, sorry. And Mr. Foss. I want you guys to know that I appreciate when you guys call in and you give public testimony. We don't get a large turnout of public testimony unless there are contentious topics that we're discussing. And without input from the community, without ideas, we will stagnate. On that note, I would actually really enjoy, I thought about this after the surge of people walked out, if we had some large Post-it notes on the walls with markers so that people that had ideas of how to fix the problem could mark up those idea, idea boards. People that may not want to speak publicly could write on those. If you're looking for the Assembly to have all the answers, you're going to be disappointed. We have to do this as a community. So I think that's about it, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. The next Assembly Work Session is scheduled on Thursday, March 14th at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly Regular Meeting is scheduled on Thursday, March 21st at 6:30 in the Borough Assembly Chambers. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene for the executive session portion of the meeting. Thank you all for coming here, you're welcome to stay for a while.